Okay, I believe you're all ready.
Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, October 28, 2024 Board of Supervisors Work Session. This meeting is now called to order. Ms. Whitten, will you please conduct the call?
Supervisor Lewis.
Present.
Supervisor McDaniel.
Here.
Supervisor Lyons.
Here.
Supervisor Day.
We are here.
Chair Ayers.
Here. All right, we will move on to the consideration of requests for opioid funds. Spencer?
Yes. Okay, there is a tremendous amount of information on this, this item. So run and bring it to the board in regular session. I wanted to bring it to you in a work session with no request for action at this time. But rather, I'd like to for you all to think about it. There's a lot to think about. And then I'd bring it back hopefully at the next meeting if you're satisfied with what you see. So as you may recall, the county has and is slated to receive funds as a result of a class action suit, to which we and most other Virginia localities are a party. And this is just summary information. There are three pools of funds to which the county has access. The first one is direct money, and those funds come directly to the county from the result of these, these suits. The next level was individual funding is what it's called. They are, they're held at the, it's a state level, but they are assigned to the county. We just have to show them what we're going to spend the funding on. And if it's opioid related and we have access to those funds. And the last one is, is gold standard funds. It's funds that are in a smaller, smaller amounts, but they're held to a higher standards as far as expenditure. Both the cities Lexington and Buena Vista are parties and at different, different levels of funding, they're receiving less funding than the county. And the settlements provide payments to be spread out over a period of years from 2022 to 2039. And there's different amounts coming in different years. So the use of funds to date and what I've got up on the screen right now is, is, and this is in your package. But I just wanted to show you, the left column is the years that the distributions have come to the county. So you look at direct distributions right here on the left-hand side, and these are monies that, that have come into the county. So 9,000, 60,000, 74,000. I think there's a total of 144,000 that, that is sitting in our, in our pot of funds right now. And then the individual distribution in the center, 21,890 and 23, another 25,000 this year. And so, and then the gold standard funds, these are, these are lesser, lesser amount of funds. And just, you know, in your package, you've also got, these are just the, the distributions from the different parties to the suit. Walmart, CVS, you know, Janssen. And, and then I also included the city of Lexington. You'll see they, they've got lesser amounts than the county. And also the city of Buena Vista. And they've got lesser, lesser amounts. And the reason I'm showing you all of those is because we've, the city managers and I have, have looked at this and trying to do something as a regional effort, if at all possible, to have more bang for our buck. So now I'm going to bring up the funding request table. And I'll get into this in just a little bit. So use of the funds to date thus far, Buena Vista and Lexington have committed most of their funds to Rockbridge Recovery's Hope House in Buena Vista. Their total expenditure combined to date is 109,585. And the Hope House has been in operation for over a year and provides live-in rehabilitation services for male recovering addicts. Rockbridge County, last year, we, we dedicated the first two years of both the individual, that's the monies held at the state, and the gold standard funds totaling almost 40,000 to the Hope House project. And this project was initiated by the Rockbridge Community Foundation, led by Executive Director Lori Turner. So there are fund use limitations. Like I mentioned, these, these need to be tied to opioids. And our Finance Director Ashton Harrison and John Dryden to my left have worked extensively to, to help ensure that the, the proposed fund uses in front of you are in compliance as determined by the Virginia Opioid Authority. So we got some information last week that they believe that these, these are in compliance with, with the fund use standard. There's also a limitation on use of individual and gold standard funds, individual funds for, for the years. I believe it's 22 to 24, maybe 25, if not committed and pulled down from the state by, I believe, next March. That you will, we will forfeit those funds that are, that are waiting for us. We just haven't applied for them. We wouldn't be forfeiting our local funds, but, or direct funds. But there is a, there is a timeframe that, that we need to adhere to, to be, have access to those state funds. So we've received multiple inquiries regarding fund use. And again, we worked with the work of cities to, to, to look at these. We've received two specific requests. They're outlined in your package. One of them, of course, is for Mari River Recovery Court. Recovery Court, these are courts that used to be called drug courts and they, they provide an alternative to the court system for incarceration for, for people who qualify. It was, it was good that this is being led by Josh Elrod, who is Buena Vista's Commonwealth Attorney. And it's, it's kind of good because he also sits on the Board of Rockbridge Recovery with the Hope House. So he's tied into that. And what I asked he and Ms. Turner to do would, was to bring a request, a consolidated request together. So they, they talked it over. They, they've, these requests complement each other. And also to, to show you as the board, the money that's been expended by each of the localities to date, and then the money requested from each of the localities moving ahead. So that's what this, this spreadsheet is in front of you. And I'll maybe try to zoom a little bit. A little much. Okay. So you'll see the very first, the very first thing appears to receive to date. And you can look at these numbers. And I mentioned there was 144,000 of direct funding that we've received to, to date. Lexington, Buena Vista, lesser number 74 and 36 respectively. And then there's the individual and, and the gold standard funds. And so you'll see it's just progressively, we got 23, 9, 7. So there's smaller amounts for the, the cities. So as noted here, available remaining is about 144,000 of the county. Lexington only has 13,000-ish and Buena Vista has a little over 13,000 as well. The reason for that is, is down below here, they've already, they, they've spent their money on the Hope House down here below. So you see, the county right here has not spent any of its direct funds, which was this 144. But last spring or last winter, the board did authorize us to go after the, the individual funds in amount of about 32,000 and also the gold standard at about 8,000. You'll see right here that Lexington and Buena Vista have already spent their, their direct funds. And they're, they've pretty much everything, everything but about $13,000 a piece. They have spent on the Hope House, either on, they've got a minivan and Hope House match and cottage renovations. So, so they've spent that money. So the current request for funds is here. So for Rockbridge Recovery, they're asking for pretty much all nothing from it, from Lexington and Buena Vista because they've already spent it. They've already spent theirs. But they're asking for 85,159, and there's four different things here. And they're, they're asking for, they'd like to get a little bit more fuel-efficient vehicle other than their van, which gets not so great mileage. And this would get folks to treatment. And I'll let Jerry Schaaf talk, talk to this in, in a minute, and I'll introduce her in a second. Adolescent prevention programs, they have discussed that with Rockbridge County Schools in particular, about trying to educate kids on the, the dangers of opioids and the pathway to get there that starts with maybe vaping or then it goes to the next level and the next level when they get to opioids. And so that's, that's what that is about. They've got HARM reduction insta tests. These are HIV and Hep B, I believe, tests that would be available at the Hope House. And then the biggest, biggest expenditure would be a women's sober living facility that's, that would be very, very similar to the, to the men's. Right now, they've got a capacity of six in the men's, but they have zero place for, for women. And opioids doesn't discriminate on gender. So, you know, the women have problems too. The second, second one is Recovery Court. And again, Mr. Elrod's here to speak to that. This first one is the, the drug court coordinator. And you'll note down in the, in the, down below and also in some of your other documentation, costs for those costs, personnel costs ongoing will be covered by the Virginia Supreme Court. They just have to get, get the program up off the ground in the first year. So 50,000 for drug court coordinator. And then other things urine screen testing devices, other testing supplies and books. So, and also you'll notice here on the line, drug court coordinator, 50,000 here. Also, the 13,000 remaining for each of the cities would be, they request the, their remaining funds for that purpose. And then the, the future, future ones, you know, the, these are, this is unrealized money at this point. These are future years. They're, the estimates. And again, the first, the first spreadsheet, spreadsheet I showed you shows you the amounts in, in outgoing years. And that's not realized money, but in its, it's, it's an estimate. So I asked for, and they, they did exactly what I asked them to do, provided them with a, a a template and they filled it in. And we wanted to, we wanted to see what the ongoing call, requests would be in the future. And then down below, again, there's narratives and key points all the way down. And I'll also note, note that Jerry Schaaf is here. She was the Executive Director of VPOS, a Valley Program for Aging Services for many years. Really enjoyed working with, with Jerry. And she, she is volunteering with the Rockbridge Recovery. She's got tremendous amount of experience with 501(c)(3)'s, and that's when she volunteers her services for them. And finally, Lori Turner, Executive Director of Community Foundation. Her, incidentally, her, her meeting, her board meeting is simultaneous to this. So she couldn't be here. So Jerry volunteered to, to come talk. Does that sound about right? All right. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have of me or just let these folks explain a little bit more and answer any questions of them.
Welcome and thank you for being here.
Any other questions? I'd like to clarify one thing about the direct and gold standard monies. Those come as the result of a collaborative agreement between the three localities that has to be executed and approved by the Opioid Abatement Authority around a specific project. So the three localities entered into that agreement around Rockbridge Recovery and Hope House. So that money is only available to support that project, which is why you'll see in the spreadsheet that individual and both standard money are only being put into that spreadsheet for Rockbridge Recovery and not for the Recovery Court, because it can't be spent there. And the direct money for FY '22 to '25, under the terms of the settlement, everybody's learning as they go on this because it's new. But the OAA gave the localities, all of the localities, three years to kind of figure this out. Because all of a sudden, there was this ton of money going to individual localities and states to support opioid treatment, prevention, rehabilitation, all these things. But agencies had to be stood up. Methods had to be stood up. So they gave them some time to spend the money. For years 22 to 25, even the individual money, I mean, the direct money must be spent by April of 2025. Well, 22, 23, and 24 must be spent by April of '25, or it stays on the table. It will go back. The other thing is on these way out years, nobody knows exactly what those numbers are going to be because the people who are paying the money can choose when to pay it. They just have to pay it by '39. So some of the losers in the suit chose to pay it all at one time. Others chose to pay it over 10 years or 15 years or 20 years. But they could change their minds at any time and look at it and go, well, we've been paying on this for 10 years, but there's only 10 million left. Let's just cut a check and pay it all. So we don't know how long it'll take for all the money to come in or what will be there in, in any one year.
And if it's all right, I do want to say just a couple of things about the Recovery Court. Because I think you all may have had some information before about Rockford Recovery. I think they may have been before you. I don't know. I have not addressed this body before about the Recovery Court. And I don't want to take a lot of time because I could stand here and talk for several hours probably and probably tell you things you already know, some things you may not want to know. So I, I would like to kind of defer to the questions you have. But a couple of things I do want to say to be clear. I'm here because just one of those things that, that I wound up, I think, kind of leading an effort, but that has been the product of the work of a lot of people. And it is a regional effort. So Jared Moon, Commonwealth Attorney for Lexington and Rockbridge County is on our Advisory Committee, as is Spencer. And we will serve all three jurisdictions, Lexington, Rockbridge and Buena Vista. The other thing I want to say, although Spencer is exactly right, that it is an alternative to jail or to incarceration. It is also broadly seen as not the only effective method, and certainly maybe not the most effective for most people, but one of the most effective methods of recovery for a certain class of people. And so these are really kind of complementary pieces. And, and as Lori and I were talking and Jerry and I, and having been on the board just a couple of months here, seeing what Rockbridge Recovery is doing. This was nice to come in as a joint proposal because they are complementary. What we do in Recovery Court is look at people who are high need, high risk. These are the people who are in need of, of the most kind of services, whether it's substance use disorder, what we call addiction sometimes, or substance abuse, the current terminology, substance use disorder. And people who have co-occurring mental health problems, people who have got housing, security issues, food security, instability, lack of what we sometimes refer to as habilitation. We used to talk about rehabilitation, but now with a lot of people, we talk about habilitation. People have never had a good sense of learning how to be kind of a productive functioning member of a community. And I think this is very similar with Rockwood Recovery. But those are very high need people. And then we target also very specifically high risk, which means people who are very likely, they've, they've offended, they've broken some law because that's how they get in front of the judicial system, the criminal justice system. They're very likely to break it again. So they are at high risk of recidivism. And what we're really trying to do is target those people. Because what has been found by, you know, Recovery Courts have been operating for decades, back into the last century really. And looking through all that data, what people have found is that there's, again, it's not for everybody and it's not the most important part of recovery. But for some class of people, it's the best chance for them to reach some sustained sobriety is to come through a Recovery Court. And we're trying to kind of hit those people at the most effective time and get essentially the most bang for the community's buck, both in terms of financially, because what we save in terms of incarceration, and also all of the associated benefits of your social services cost, police costs, cost on the educational system, all those kinds of things that probably you all are familiar with. But in addition, the most chance for recovery for our citizens, which is definitely part of our mission, to give them that best chance. So again, I could, I don't want to go on for too long, but I did want to kind of introduce our program, at least generally, because I don't know what you all know and don't know. But hopefully that's a little bit helpful. And, and to reiterate, I'm glad to be here with Jerry because I think these are really complementary programs. I've been impressed in my time on the board with what Rockford Recovery is doing. And so I hope, I hope these requests will meet with success.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, a couple of questions. The, the capacity of the Hope House is?
Capacity of the Hope House is six men.
Okay.
We will reach that four weeks from today.
And?
We open in April.
Where do they go for treatment?
They have been in rehab or detox. But they come to us after 28 or 45 days of rehab, of detox or rehab. They are receiving counseling within the house with our peers. Those who need professional, like psychology, psychiatry treatment, either have professionals at CSB or professionals in the community that they are seeing. But they are also, they all have full-time jobs. And they have individual primary care physicians as well.
Right. So I was just, and I guess you provide transportation to all these places for them, except what the van is for.
We do. And, and what we're trying to do is replace, not the minivan that the city of Lexington helped us buy, but a 2005 Hyundai that is our everyday driver to work, to court, to probation, to doctor's appointments, and gets now 18 miles to the gallon. Because it's so old and can't be fixed anymore.
But I, I, I wouldn't worry so much about gas mileage if everything's local and be more concerned about having something that would be large enough to.
Right. It also is the vehicle that takes people who come to us, who are looking for, for us to help them find a detox or rehab bed. It takes them, one went to Richmond today. It went to Richmond today to take someone to rehab and to Chesterfield to pick someone up from rehab to bring them to Hope House. So it does go a little bit. Those today, last, those two.
Right.
Clearly reliability is an important issue.
So are all your residents local individuals or are you serving individuals from other communities?
We are committed to serving residents of Buena Vista, Lexington, and Rockbridge County. We just had a bit of a to-do with a potential funder who wanted us to register with an organization called Unite Us, which puts out the details of nonprofits and who they serve throughout the state to, in order to receive referrals from, with throughout the state. And we refused because we are not willing to take referrals from throughout the state. Right now, all three of our residents are Rockbridge County residents. The one that will be here at the end of the month is a Buena Vista resident. And that's one that's coming is a Rockbridge County resident. And the last one that'll be coming in is homeless. Has not had a permanent address in probably six years, but came to us through the Rockbridge County Public Defender.
Josh, can you tell us a little bit more about the Recovery Court? Now, what happens to someone that gets referred there as, as far as instead of getting incarcerated? What do we do for them?
So what this would look like is, is somebody comes into the court system with what would be a felony-grade drug charge. Because anything related to our most serious drugs, methamphetamine, fentanyl, heroin, cocaine, is going to be a felony, just even if it's a possession charge. And most likely, this is going to be somebody who has had a number of prior drug charges. And I'll just kind of give you the, the kind of profile, be somebody who has been put on probation before. They've been unsuccessful, maybe numerous times. Without a significant violent history, I say significant, they cannot have a conviction of a crime of violence, which is a term of art that relates to a federal standard, but it means anything basically involving a weapon or, you know, seriously hurting somebody. But they've had a prolonged history and usually they're going to have had a fairly prolonged struggle with substance use disorder. This is not something generally for a first-time user. And they, they're going to come in and between their attorney, likely the public defender, but it could be another attorney, and the prosecutor for that jurisdiction. So if this is a Rockbridge County or Lexington case, this is going to be Jared Moon or his office. If it's a Buena Vista case, it's going to be me. And we evaluate them on a number of factors. And there is some objective, there's a real objective aspect to this. I won't go into the details, but if they fit this profile of being high-risk, high-need, nonviolent, we're going to generally admit them into Recovery Court if they want to go. And that's a big if, because once they're in Recovery Court, and it's generally going to be like, probably about an 18-month program, the, the kind of supervision and oversight that they're going to get and the accountability is going to be more than anything they've gotten on probation in their past, more than in one sense, anything they would get in jail. In jail, they may be incarcerated, but to a great extent, they're kind of left alone. They're going to be attending nine hours of what's called intensive outpatient drug treatment, which is going to be offered by the Community Service Board. Greg Hornback there and Kim Shaw have been really instrumental in putting together that program. They're going to be doing a lot of peer recovery. Sometimes I think as much as five nights or more, a week of going to a peer recovery meeting, which is something that of course, Rockbridge Recovery offers a lot of options. The Community Service Board also has peer recovery. There, there is a lot of emphasis on engagement in post-social activities. So whereas traditional incarceration is punitive, you're punishing somebody. I think there's a recognition within Recovery Court that you also want to get people used to doing things that are positive community behaviors. A lot of times people talk in really general terms about it, you know, trying to get over an addiction. They'll say, we'll change your people, places and things. And that is a good byword, but there's a lot more to it than that. And, and you're developing this sense of, you know, how to be this person within the community and be a, a productive, law-abiding person. Because many people who come out of incarceration return to the same, you know, community within our community that they've been part of. And, you know, I think anybody involved in law enforcement will tell you, it's just very frequent, you're going to come back into contact with those people. So the Recovery Court has a phased system that the participants work. That the participants work through and the court aspect of it is a weekly meeting. Judge Russell has very nicely agreed to administer this court, so he will be holding court one day a week. It'll be here in Rockbridge County. And before that meeting. All of the people who are involved with the team, which includes the treatment providers. A supervision officer, which is kind of like a probation officer. That's the position that we're in part looking to fund here, the coordinator position, supervision, the Commonwealth attorneys. A law enforcement representative. Other people who are associated with recovery come in and they basically staff this individual's behavior and they look at how it's been for the last week. The individual then is going to, the judge is part of that meeting as well. The individual then goes into that court hearing and sort of engages in a dialogue with the judge about the positives and negatives of the past week's kind of behavior. And the judge can impose sanctions and can also offer incentives to that individual and these can be fairly small things. A sanction could be some community service, it could be kind of a writing exercise. It could be even, hey, next recovery court, you need to show up early to help kind of set up or you need to help take down. The incentives can be kind of symbolic, like a token, like somebody gets in a pure recovery. But it can also be a small financial incentive, like, you know, did great this week. You've gone, you know, this many weeks substance free. This is a gift pass to go to a movie. And sometimes those are sourced through fundraising, sometimes they're sourced from the community looking for in-kind donations. But as the person progresses through this court and progresses through phases. Their participation tapers down, so they're not coming to court quite as much. And at the end, they will have achieved at least consistently 90 days substance free, which again, you know, if you've been involved in this process, either with an individual. Who you know, or professionally, you know, 90 days sober is really tough for a lot of people. And really kind of is going to separate out somebody who is hopefully on their way to success from somebody who is maybe not giving full effort or isn't really ready. That sobriety in the recovery court context is corroborated by frequent and random testing. As part of the reason we've made this request for, you know, I think it's like over $10,000 in testing supplies a year. Because they're going to be tested, it could be a weekend, it could be Christmas Day. They could be tested. And that is administered by the, the recovery court coordinator. But that is viewed from the national state level and locally, we view it as incredibly important to know. You know, that this is accurate, that we've got somebody who's really succeeding. And the last thing I'll say, and I don't know if I've answered your question, but I'm glad to offer more detail, but for somebody not involved in the system, they might think that an individual on probation is under a lot of supervision. And the truth is, and this is not the fault of the probation office, I mean, this is the design. They might see a probation officer a couple of times a month. They might be tested, drug tested once a month, that might be early on. Intensive probation, if the judge orders that, might be once a week, but that's unlikely. People who are engaged from recovery court are really spending the bulk of their time engaged in these activities. It is a whole different level and that's why I sort of prefaced this part of the answer by saying once we have a plea agreement, if somebody wants to go into recovery court. There are people and talking to other jurisdictions close to here. People will drop out and decide, I'd rather be in jail. I mean, this is too much work. And if somebody is not ready for recovery. They're not going to succeed in this program. Not everybody who goes through the program will never offend again. Not everybody who gets halfway through, you know, will make it, but I just want to make it clear, because I've heard this a lot anecdotally, this is not an easy way out for anybody. But that's kind of what it looks like. And at the end, there's a graduation and everybody claps and feels great. If somebody comes out of that. This is really the last thing I'll say, the recidivism numbers, even for somebody who doesn't make it through the whole program compared to general. So even somebody coming out of the same length of incarceration, much better and, and some materials that I think Spencer may have supplied or I'm glad to supply again. Show that particularly for people who succeed, recidivism numbers are way lower and you know, 3% of the population is like 90% of our docket. So if we knock one person out of that cycle, we're kind of making a difference.
Procedurally, Spencer and Mr. Shaft, I think you mentioned that the three localities concerned here had, had already joined together to support the Hope House, if I had it correct. So, so that's where some money's got to go.
Correct.
Correct.
Very technically, it wouldn't have to go there unless it's gold standard, the, the next
Standard and direct and individual.
And, and individual. So, so we've committed on the funds that you've already allocated, the gold standard and the individual. I don't think, I don't think that locked you in to all your
Right.
In your
I'm not being, yeah.
Right.
Your individual
I just want to make sure I heard that and I just want to make sure I understood.
Right.
It did lock you in for the monies that you have already committed, the 30 some thousand, 39,000.
It's already been distributed.
Right. That's been distributed. And like I say, I'm not, not asking for a, you know, any kind of decision today, but it's a lot of information to get your arms around and I just want to do it in a work session format so that you can think on it, ask any questions, you might have some questions after the meeting. But at a certain point, I probably do need to bring it back forward to
Absolutely. I appreciate you working together and helping us figure this out.
The two programs really do mesh. I mean, you know, it's going to be in-kind, kind of, what keeps the cost out is that we do have each program providing in-kind support to the other. Rather than the court having to hire a peer recovery specialist. Both Record Recovery and CSB can provide that as an in-kind support. Record Recovery can use the court services when it's necessary. Excuse me. Just a couple of real quick things in the Record Recovery request. One of them, and, and it's a fair amount of money, is the harm reduction insta-tests. There is no one in Rockbridge County, Buena Vista or Lexington that is offering free HIV or COVID tests since the health department stopped. We now have a license to do that. Normally the vendors charge $80 a test. For us to get those tests, but we found a vendor that will sell them to us for $15 a test. So we're asking for funding for that. And the adolescent intervention program, we're working very closely with the disciplinary committee at the Rockbridge County Public Schools, High School. And they're excited, we will probably have that up and running right around Thanksgiving. And that's kids who've been caught vaping THC. And it's a non-secular, non-12-step program for Saturdays. That addresses addictive behavior, whether that's vaping tobacco, alcohol, drugs, overeating, social media. Video games. To learn to control that behavior before it's something that becomes more dangerous.
Gentlemen.
One more minor question. Josh, do as you pointed out, I don't know that much about recovery courts, but to Jerry's point there, do, are there other recovery courts going in the Commonwealth?
Yeah.
And do they have the support of the blend, you know, or are they sort of on their own with staffing and that sort of thing?
So
So would this be a model, I guess, is sort of what else?
I think it I'll say this, it's a model, not that it's the only one of its kind, but where these programs really work well. And where I think they really benefit the community the most. Is they bring together resources to address a problem in an efficient way. And they kind of get agencies, I don't want to say this is the agency's fault, but they kind of get people out of silos. Right, so you know, we want to sort of engage with Rockbridge Recovery, we want to engage with community services, we want to talk to the health center, we want to talk to Corillian. Because at the end of the day, I think we all, and, and Rockbridge Recovery is definitely this way, we have the same measure of success, which is you know, somebody getting into recovery. Who otherwise is, you know, just so weighed down by this substance use disorder that they are not, they're not benefiting themselves and they're not benefiting the community. Allegheny County, Bodacott County, Nelson County. I feel, I'm sure the city of Lynchburg. Amherst County. Stan Augusta Waynesboro, everybody around us, Roanoke City, Roanoke County have recovery courts. And again, I think where they work best is where they do work in a sort of in a complimentary fashion with kind of external agencies. I don't know if that answers your question. I don't know if this is specifically a model, but I I'll say one more thing to it. I started being a prosecutor five years ago. I don't like to put people in jail, but I feel like I have no choice a lot of days and and I do it a lot of the time. I mean, that's just the result of a good number of our cases. And I feel like early on as I was prosecuting, I saw there were resources here for people in recovery, but for a lot of things, people had to go out of the area. And sober living environment was one of the big things. We would send people to Richmond. We would send people to, you know, to Galax for recovery programs, almost always sending people out of the area. In the last few years, because of Record Recovery, other things that are going on, I think there, there's a little bit of a ground swell and a, and a critical mass of effort toward recovery. And I just feel like in my observation, that can be we're maybe on the cusp and even starting to benefit, we're starting to realize some of the benefits of, of having that able to be centered here. People can stay, you know, be within their extended family. A lot of people who we deal with have never lived outside this county. Have very few connections outside this county, very few resources. And to be able to do that here is a really good thing. And again, that's why I think this is a good just a good match and I think the two programs do better for each other. So I hope that helps.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
One, the research that I've done, the where you have the support of the, the courts that are, that are invested, the judges. These, these have been successful and, and, you know, and have wide community support with the prosecutors, the Commonwealth attorneys and everybody. When you've got that support, which is, I think Josh did a really good job of bringing all those people to the table and getting everybody together from the onset of this.
Yes.
One more question, Mr. Ora. It was my understanding, I think I heard Mr. Suter correctly, that we fund the startup costs, the cost thereafter would be at the state level?
That is our hope and expectation. I can't guarantee that we're going to get this funding, which is through the Supreme Court of Virginia, but all the conversations that I've had, both with kind of peer courts, but also with people within that office. Give me a lot of reason to believe that we're going to get that recurring funding that we would qualify. One of the things that we've done. Try to put ourselves in the best position is to build our program based on what are called best practices, or in Virginia, they call them the Virginia Recovery Court standards. And this is like a model that the state gets together and, and puts out periodically, they do this nationally through the Bureau of Justice Assistance, which is part of the Justice Department as well. We don't follow the national system quite as closely as the Virginia system. But we've really taken great pains to kind of build this program from the ground up. We followed what other people have done. But looked at what is kind of most current and recognized at the state level through their research as being most effective. That gives me a lot of confidence. Now, if that were to fall through, there are really a lot of other potential funding sources, SAMPA. Which is, I think administered through BBHDS. It's that, are those all the initials of BBHDS?
DMHGS.
The The Bureau of Justice Assistance, and some of those are much larger grants actually, but we tried to build this kind of as efficiently as we can. And I guess just to answer your question more plainly, I cannot guarantee what we're going to get, but it is our, really our expectation that we're going to ask for this request to sort of prime the pump to get running. And then at least for the bulk of funding, with this program, there is a local match and I can't remember the exact dollar amount and we will be trying to raise some local funding, we may be coming back to you, but it won't be for the bulk of the funding. It might be like these continuing requests that I think are in here for drug testing supplies or that kind of thing. The, the program hopefully will be funded out of this state pot of money. And my understanding is that the, actually the legislature added about $750,000 last year to that pot, so there are new positions that are available and I think we're only one of two courts that are making application to start up this year, so you know, without sort of putting a guarantee on it, I think it's a very good chance that we're going to get that funding.
And when will you find out about that?
So we have to be approved by the Supreme Court of Virginia to run the docket. That meeting was supposed to happen last Wednesday. But they didn't have a quorum. People come from all over the state to do that and they moved it to December 3rd. I'll appear on that date. As well as I think some other representatives from a court effort and, and we feel real confident we're going to get approved. And as soon as we're approved, we can put in an application. It is possible that we would even receive funding initially. I've had some discussions with the folks in the office, the executive secretary of the Supreme Court about that. They typically don't do that, but because there's some new funding available, it's possible. But we're really anxious to get this up and running and you know, we've got to sort of start to try to line up some funding sources. And I know this money being available and there being some time limit on you all using it, that seemed like a good reason to go ahead and request it. It is possible that we would get state funding earlier than we might think, but traditionally the idea has been you stand up the court first locally, so I don't, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with your comment there. The only thing I, I think we have found on numerous occasions, the state falls short of their promises. So, you know, we just have to understand what's coming down the road, not just for this board, but you know, future, future boards as far as what type of funding is going to be required to sustain them.
Yeah. Well, what we are asking for is, is this funding for this year and I can't guarantee what will happen, but I will say we have no expectation that we're going to come back and be asking for this kind of money year after year. So that's probably as much as I can say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, anything else? Thank you both for being here.
Thank you all so much.
The board's regular meeting will begin at 5:30. If there are no other comments or questions, is there a motion to adjourn the work session?
So moved.
Your second? Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Day? Mr. Lewis? Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
I scratched out the first one because the pin tore the bike.
Welcome to the Monday, October 28th, 2024 Board of Supervisors Meeting. This meeting is now called to order. Ms. Witten, will you now conduct a roll call?
Supervisor Lewis?
Present.
Supervisor Day?
Here.
Supervisor McDaniel?
Here.
Supervisor Lyons?
Here.
Chair Ayers?
Here.
We will now offer an invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Those attending are not required to participate, but if you'd like to join us, please stand.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for your many blessings. We ask that you continue to bless the citizens of Rockbridge County and that you continue to instill the wisdom and the courage for the supervisors to make the best decisions they possibly can. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any announcements, Mr. Suter?
No, I do not have any, no.
Okay, I have one and I will cover that in the next item, under changes to the agenda, which here we are. First, I would like to move item nine, consideration of the Industrial Revitalization Fund, IRF grant, contracts up to the agenda to the first general item. And that's due to Brandy Flint needing to travel, and we want her to be able to get her, her report done. So, yes, sir.
Chairs, we have, would like to have another change in the agenda. What we'd like to do is we've, there's a county staff is requesting that we move an item dealing with the Warm Run Solar Special Exception Application forward to the beginning of the meeting. And the reason for asking for that is we've identified three issues that we believe would, would best be served if we could have this remanded to the Planning Commission for further consideration. The first issue has to do with a, a voting situation during the Planning Commission and meeting on September 11th, 2024, when they considered the application. One of the commissioners could participate electronically, which was allowed under the policy that we believed was in effect at that time. However, a citizen from the community reached out to me after the meeting to point out there had been a change in the law, which required that you must adopt your electronic a medium participation policy at least annually prior to any meetings. Given that and out of abundance of caution, we believe the best situation would be to re- remand it back to the Planning Commission so they can vote on this again. Further, there's, because of the way this issue came up to the Board of Supervisors, it's not clear whether or not the Planning Commission actually voted as to whether or not this, this pro, the Warm Run Solar project was in substantial compliance with the comprehensive plan, which is required to be voted on. And so we recommend that it also be remanded for considerations for that matter. And there are some additional conditions which have been brought up, which would be useful to have the Planning Commission put their input into. Because of this request that a motion be made to, to cancel today's, well, there's not need for a motion to cancel today's public hearing that can be done by, by the chair, but a motion be made to remand this matter to the Planning Commission for further consideration and then granting 30 additional days for the Planning Commission to consider this matter.
All right. Mr. Lewis?
Madam Chair, I'll read a statement before that. In accordance with the opinion letter I see, received from the Commonwealth's Attorney, I state the following. Serve as a director on the Board of VRC Electric Cooperative, which is the same industry as the applicant Warm Run Solar LLC. Therefore, I have a personal interest in the consideration of the application for special exception permit for a public utility. However, under the Conflict of Interest Act, I'm not disqualified from participation in this matter. My disclosure statement is on file with the clerk to the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Is there a motion?
Madam Chairman, I move that the matter of the Warm Run Solar Special Exception Application be remanded to the Planning Commission for further consideration and a vote, and that the Planning Commission be granted an additional 30 days in which they can take action of the application. The Planning Commission shall also make a determination as to whether the Warm Run Solar project is in substantial compliance with the comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Mr. Day. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McDaniel, Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
And I vote yes. Given this matter was scheduled for public hearing at 6:00 PM, but is now remanded back to the Planning Commission, I will also add a special citizen's comment period for anybody wishing to speak at that time. Please bear in mind that this is not a public hearing, rather it is an opportunity for anyone who took the time to come to this meeting to speak. The public hearing for the Board of Supervisors on this manner, matter will be scheduled for a la- later date after the Planning Commission takes it up again. In addition to the comments from those physically present at the meeting, we will do our best to take citizen comment remotely. There are two options for citizens to offer comments remotely. To join by telephone, you may dial in to one of the numbers listed in the county website. Webinar ID and password are on there for your convenience. Citizens wishing to simply view the meeting live or after the fact can do so on the Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors YouTube channel, also available on the county website. If you wish to make a citizen comment as a Zoom meeting participant, you'll use the Raise Your Hand feature. You can press the Raise Hand button on the bottom of your Zoom window or press star nine if you are calling in by telephone. Are there any recognitions or presentations, Mr. Suter?
No, ma'am.
We will now welcome citizens' comments. As a reminder, though, tonight's public hearing has been canceled. A special citizen comment period for the Warm Run Solar application has just been added to the 6:00 PM. Should anyone wish to speak on that matter or come in at that time. For citizen comments, when your name is called, please address the board at the podium, saying your name, first and last name, and magisterial district. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. There is a timer on the table for your convenience. Is there anybody signed up in person?
Not for the general citizen comment, Madam Chair, but we do have several for the six o'clock.
Six o'clock. Is there anyone online? Okay, certainly. Is there?
The, there is no one with a hand raised online.
That, my next thing was, is there anyone in the meeting room that would, that had wishes to address? That would be you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name's Chris Baum, and I'm in Walker Street District. The vote that you just took, and I'm not going to speak to the merits of what's going on, there's some of the procedural issues, and there's more than just what was brought up tonight, came from me. I would be the citizen. And I'm not clear, and I would like some explanation on how it can go back to the Planning Commission. I understand the vote's already been taken, but there was a vote made, the vote was improper. And if it goes back to the Planning Commission, the person who voted improperly had a no malice or doing anything they knew was wrong, is going to be able to vote. And historically, when you have a vote that doesn't go a certain way, you are not allowed to go back and recreate that vote. There's a reason that we have the requirements that people be present or that they follow the law as to how to vote remotely. That was not followed. The vote, the decision was made. So I don't, I'm not clear, and I would like some clarification on how it can go back to the Planning Commission. The, the motion failed. There was an improper vote. It was, the recommendation was to not approve Warm Run Solar, and that's what should be before the Board of Supervisors stay. Again, I, I'll stand for any questions, but I would like some clarification.
So this is citizens' comments. So we are now moving on. Thank you for your, is there anybody else?
Bill Russell, Cars Creek. My understanding is correct, this is a gen, citizens sent comments on general items.
You can speak now or you can speak at six. You have either, either one.
Speak to rules and procedures and discussion on transparency, COYA, and real party and interest. And my concern that, that these items have not moved forward in addition to which, and I understand some of it's being worked on, but the appearance lacking in some of these of real transparency on the county, I think is apparent to a lot of people in the county. Real party, real party of interest, considerations and applications for a variety of, of waivers needs to be tightened up and it needs to be brought into, to compliance with what the state would allow you to do. And I also want to note, on behalf of the Rockbridge Taxpayers Alliance, that we will be filing an amended request on a recusal that's already been before you. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? Not, we will move on to the approval of the October 15th. Okay, sure, absolutely.
Michelle Johnson from Cars Creek, just to expand on what was just said, real party of interest, we
real party of interest, we all know we're a Dillon State, and I want to say this clearly to make sure that we all have the same information. In the past, we've made available, and we can make available for the record for the supervisors, the state has given local jurisdictions the ability to pass ordinances requiring the disclosure of real party of interest. So you have the ability, you have the authority to pass that and do that, and we're asking you to do it. Just to be crystal clear, what is the request? And to make sure that you all have the same information, because in the past we have been told this is a Dillon State, yes, but it does not apply in this situation. We're asking you to act on the authority that you can act on. You've been given that authority by the state, and we're asking you to pass ordinances that reveal the real party of interest in real estate actions. Thank you.
Thank you. For those of you just coming in, you will have an an opportunity to speak at six if you were wishing for public comment. We will move on to the approval of October 15th, 2024 minutes. Did everyone have time to review the draft minutes? And are there any questions?
Madam Chair, what I would have been proud to read the National Fire Prevention Week proclamation. I unfortunately was not able to make the meeting, so I'd like to, and it's changed to, to credit the person who was able to do that.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
No, ma'am.
All right, is there a second?
Second, I'm sorry. Is that with the the stated change, the motion and second?
Uh, yes, with with the correction of who read, yes, thank you for catching that. Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Stane.
And I vote yes. Consideration of County Appropriation Resolution, Mr. Harrison?
Uh, yes, before you, as a resolution requesting authorization of the payment of bills and additional appropriations. Uh, the total amount of bills this period is $488,532.57, and the total amount of additional appropriations is $455,277. The lion's share of that $300,000 is a pass through from the General Assembly to the county, to the Virginia Horse Center for their parking lot. Mr. Dryden and Mr. Suter are working on a, to bring a, at a future agenda, a brief agreement between Rockbridge County and the Virginia Horse Center on the use of those funds. Uh, so no funds will be expended until that agreement is executed. Uh, there's $121,135 to the, our local EDA and the $33,942 to the Rockbridge Regional Library that the board approved at the last meeting.
All right. Gentlemen, any questions?
Move to approve the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
And I vote yes. We will move on to the consideration of Industrial Revitalization Fund contract, grant contracts. Ms. Flint?
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for allowing me to present earlier. I am headed south to Whitville for the Governor's Summit on Rural Prosperity as a member of the 2024 Virginia Rural Leadership Institution. So I'm excited to head there this evening. As you recall, back in August, the county was awarded a million dollar grant as part of the Industrial Vitalization Fund for the Virginia Mechanical Preservation Society to revitalize the former Stillwater Plant in Goshen. As a part of that funding, we do have to have the contract documents, which are included in your package tonight. One is a standard D H C D Department of Housing and Community Development Grant. The second one is an agreement between Virginia Mechanical Preservation Society, the Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission and the county outlining how the contract will be executed, the match funding will be paid for, and the grant administration cost paid for by the Virginia Mechanical Preservation Society. So if you do not have any questions on that, I'll just entertain.
Gentlemen?
I'd like to thank you, Brandy and Dryden for working on that. That's taking longer than we all would have liked, but it's a exciting proposition for our districts. I I move, we approve the request.
All right, Mr. Lewis, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Safe travels. Consideration of FY 2026 budget schedule and funded prior, funding priorities, Mr. Harrison?
Um, yes, before you, as the draft FY 2026 budget schedule and the FY 26 budget priorities, the school division has also reviewed the budget schedule, and they are okay with the proposed joint meeting dates. And the finance committee has also looked at the budget schedule and recommended be brought to the full board. With the FY 26 budget priorities, there's no changes that have been made to the FY 25 budget priorities. Again, that document was also reviewed by the finance committee to recommend it being brought forward to the full board.
Okay.
We plan to send out budget letters beginning November 1st, Friday, a bunch of request letters.
Thank you. All right.
If there's no questions or comments, I move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. McDaniel. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Consideration of Maury Express Contract, Mr. Suter?
Yes, it's your, at your last meeting, you approved the proposed ranking for the Maury Express Public Transportation System contract and authorized staff to negotiate such contract. A copy of the proposed contact with radar is included in your package. It was sent, it was completed and and sent to the Regional Advisory Board, which expressed support. Um, and radar, the the proposed contractor approved it as well in its, in its form. Uh, similar to past contracts, it includes a five-year term with optional two, one, two optional one-year terms. And again, approximately 78%, give or take every year, around 80 of the costs associated with that service or via state and federal grants, and the the local balance is shared among the county Lexington, Buena Vista, VMI, and WNL. And our request is to you, you authorize me approve the contract and authorize me to execute it. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Gentlemen, any questions for Mr. Suter?
Make a motion and we'll advise Mr. Suter to pursue, finish the contract.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, we will, again, we will, since the public hearing has been canceled, but we will take citizens' comment.
You can do that. You can just continue on with that.
Citizen comments? As long as we go past six, I want anybody that's arriving to the meeting to be able to speak. Um, we will now open citizens' comments. So if you would like, you don't have to sign up. Do we have that? Do we have?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, fine, then we'll start there.
Oh, we have.
Would, would you like to go over the information here for the?
Uh, okay, let me, actually, thank you, Spencer, for catching on. Let me make sure everybody. You don't feel like there's any problem waiting until, should we wait till six?
I, I think.
It, it's, it's not a public hearing, so you're not required by statute, so that would just purely be a decision on your part, whether for fairness for the people participating.
Okay.
As long as you're, as long as you're still doing it six o'clock, if somebody wants to speak, I think that somebody who came to speak under a public hearing would have an opportunity.
All righty. Um, for those now in attendance who are not here or online near the beginning of the meeting, the board has voted to remand this matter back to the Planning Commission for further consideration and granted the Planning Commission an additional 30 days to act. Thus, there will be no presentation or public hearing this evening. However, however, out of respect to those of you who took the time to attend this meeting, we will now hold a special public comment period if you would like to speak to this issue. Please bear in mind that there will be an opportunity to provide comment when this issue comes back before the board and a new public hearing is scheduled. We will now welcome citizens' comments. Citizens are welcome to sign up to speak in person or use the raise your hand feature online if they wish to address the commission. We will also recognize anyone in attendance that has not signed up. This time is offered for citizens to offer comments to the Board of Supervisors with the understanding that this is not an open dialogue nor a question and answer period. Comments should be addressed only to the board and not the audience. Our goal is to have anyone that wishes to address the board speak and for the audience and board to listen and to be respectful to all. Once you have signed up and when I call your name to speak, please address the board at the podium stating your first and last name and magisterial district. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. There is a timer on the table for your convenience. Once the timer has gone off, please take your seat. Is there anyone signed up or we'll start with the first person signed up?
Uh, yes, ma'am, and apologize to anyone if I mispronounced your name. Uh, the first person signed up is Fed, Fred.
February. Good evening, Mr. February.
I'm, uh, my name is Fred February, and I'm from Walker Street District. Uh, my wife and I have lived here for 33 years. I speak today in favor of the Huffman, uh, solar farm, and I speak for many reasons. I believe the Huffmans currently have an ownership right to rent their property for a solar farm as it meets the Planning Commission's proposed rules. The county will benefit from increased taxes on the land. Local workers will be hired and to tend and build. If planted with pollinator attracting plants under and around the solar panels, the land will become more fertile and the region will benefit from bees that gather. And the arrays when removed in 30 years will leave intact farmland having been preserved from industrial development. These reasons are important, but the major reason, from my opinion, is in our country's need for clean electricity generated without carbon dioxide released to the air. Virtually all climate scientists agree that our planet is getting hotter and will continue to get hotter until we stop the rise of CO2 concentration in the air. They warn that droughts, wildfire, wildfires, and severe rain events will become more probable and will increasingly affect Rockbridge County. Moreover, the intensity of each of these hazards will increase until the global CO2 level stops increasing. These predictions of climate scientists must be heeded. So our federal government, aware of these things, has provided incentives to investors to build solar and wind farms as a partial solution against increasing global warming. For 30 years, the Huffman Solar Array will stop that portion of CO2 pollution that results from electricity currently supplied by Virginia coal-fired generating plants to an estimated 340 homes in Rockbridge County. Building the Huffman Solar Farm is a small but necessary step to stop global warming and will will benefit each and every person in the county, in our state, and in our country. For all these and many reasons, I strongly recommend going ahead with the proposed solar array.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Joe Borzalika?
I'm Joe Borzalika. I'm also from Walker's Creek. I am also here to speak in support of the project. For all the reasons that Mr. February just raised, the use of the land for 30 years does guarantee that it can not only be used as agricultural land while the panels are on it. There are many, you can go to YouTube, you can go to all over the internet to see cattle and sheep grazing under solar panels. These, these uses exist. It does keep that land from being used as a concentrated animal feeding operation, it, it, other industrialization over the course of the 30 years that those panels will be used. And when they are taken away, you now have agricultural land once again. The rents that are paid to the owners, in many cases, help the owners continue to farm the remainder of their agricultural land. Um, everybody can always use a, a few extra dollars to keep the farm running. And that's essentially all that I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mona Hazera?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening, and even though it's not a formal presentation.
Your, your magisterial district, if you don't mind.
Oh, yes. Mona Hazera, Cars Creek.
Thank you.
Um, I'm looking at this, the issue is greater than just the Warm Run Power Generating Facility. It's about solar generating facilities around the county. Sufficient facts have been presented that show the adverse impact of such industrial facilities that provide virtually no benefit to the residents, except perhaps to the individual landowner and those companies that buy and sell these facilities for carbon credits, and they're bought and sold many times over. It's a, it's a money-making business. There are also broader issues related to consider, such as wind turbines, telecommunications, and other projects that would have an impact on the residents of Rockbridge County. Will these be managed by exception as well, because they will only continue to grow? So such critical decisions should have definable and accountable parameters that benefit the residents of the county and not decisions that continue to be made by exception with no real viable policy. Now, the policy would have been in the comprehensive plan, but it appears the comprehensive plan has not really been fully considered in making these decisions. So as a, as an option, other counties have policies addressing these issues. If we look at Augusta, our neighbor, they amended their comprehensive plan in 2021 to include under its utilities guidance, various policies to safeguard the residents. And policy number two under that states, in part, maintain rural view sheds and agriculture as a predominant component of the economy and utility scale solar development so long as the cluster size or fragmentation of such facilities does not have an undue adverse impact on the surrounding neighbors. And that is what's happening at Warm Run and perhaps at other locations as well. So I'm suggesting that Rockbridge can learn from Augusta. Um, I think they've got some good ideas there, and they're putting their residents first. Maybe we should consider that, and the board can be progressive in its governance and develop policies to include like truly tangible citizen input. And I'll close with that, and just, just as a, as a question to wonder, would a facility like Warm Run or Fairfield or or similar facilities, would you want that to be built next to you? Would you vote for it or against it? I would, from this point forward with what's happening, I'd be worried that there'd be one next to me tomorrow because I don't know what's happening. There is no real policy. Um, it's, everything is by exception. So it would be really great if you would consider a policy that would manage not just the solar facilities, but everything that's coming down the road, the turbines, everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Hart?
Steve Hart, Cars Creek. So here we are again for the seventh time. We're going to hear the exact same presentation, but with a different company logo. We're going to hear the exact same comments from a different set of. We're going to hear the exact same comments from a different set of neighbors and some of the serial commentators. And the question is, why do we keep playing this movie over and over and over again? And Ms. Herrera just hit it on the head. Three years ago, some of us came before you and said, we need an ordinance. Don't have one. During the comprehensive review process, we said, hey, this is an issue. We'd like to talk about it a little bit more. Don't have one. Board's position, staff's position has been, well, it's a use by special exception and we handle it through the special exception process in A2 zones. Okay? Who drives that train? It's not the citizens of the county. It's not staff. It's not you. It's corporate interests that didn't exist a year ago that have access to vast sums of government money that none of the rest of us can touch and are going to disappear as soon as they sell it. I didn't make that up. That is, in fact, what has happened. Who's setting the future of Rockbridge County? Is it us, the citizens? Is it you, the board? Is it us together like it's supposed to be? Or is it corporate interests that show up? We talk about landowners want to do things, and I was here a month ago. I was here to spend my money to do something on my land, and I'm doing the labor for it. I haven't seen a landowner come in and present on a solar field. I have seen a corporate interest. And frankly, I don't like it when somebody I don't know, who's not my neighbor, who doesn't have my best interest at heart, who's not going to be here when my grandkids are here, driving the train. I think we need to decide what we want to do in general without a specific project in front of us before we entertain any more of these. One of the questions that somebody raised in the paper, it's actually a really good question. Should there be an upper limit? How much is our fair share? That's a really good question. I don't know the answer to it. But it's questions like that that we ought to answer before we do this so we understand what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart.
Bob Biersack?
I want to remind the audience that we're not, no clapping, no comment. It's really appreciated.
Thank you.
I'm Bob Biersack. I live in the Cars Creek District. I actually participated in a group of citizens from the county. There were six of us with very different perspectives who spent almost six months considering these kinds of very questions. The parameters that we should use to guide decisions and how we cite these kinds of facilities. It was a careful consideration you've got before you and you have access to a whole variety of resources. They considered all the parameters, all the different questions, land use questions, ecological questions, view shed questions that would go into an ordinance that would define this process and shape your consideration of these kinds of facilities. I'll tell you, just as a matter of course, that this particular proposal does appear to conform to the kinds of proposals that we developed as a draft ordinance that you could consider in the future or you could consider it fairly shortly, I think. We'd be happy to sit down with you and talk about that process that we went through in order to develop those parameters and understand the complexities of this process. And I think there's good guidance in there that you could use going forward that would conform to the kinds of requests you've gotten from other citizens tonight and allow you to make these decisions with better information and a good consistent policy going forward. Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you.
Don Hinky?
Since you moved that.
Mr. Hinky, can you please give us your magisterial?
Oh, sorry. Sure. Don Hinky, the Lewis's District. Get my age, get tongue-tied once in a while. Since you moved the matter back to the Planning Commission, I don't have anything to say at this time. We'll wait till that all happens.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Bill Russell?
Bill Russell again, Cars Creek still. These keep coming up. I hear same arguments not addressed directly here, but indirect about property rights, right to do whatever you want to with your land. And it seems self-evident to me that if those were true, you wouldn't have something called a special exception before you. What is an exception to is the protection of the rights that already exist in zoning and in the comprehensive plan, which are designed partly to protect neighbors. And what you're seemingly not looking directly at is the effect on the neighbors. And I've heard people say that this ends at the property line. And in fact, it doesn't. State law has considerations and has always had considerations on what you can do as far as it affects your neighbors. One of them still in effect is a nuisance law. But the general proposition is, yes, you have a right to do what you want to do with your land as long as it does not interfere with the reasonable use and enjoyment of your neighbor's lands. And I propose that most of the projects that I've seen don't meet that standard. If a project came in here and if every neighbor came in and said, I'm fine with it, frankly, I wouldn't stand up and be objecting to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tyler McGilvery?
My name is Tyler McGilvery, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Warm Run and Sun Tribe. I was born and raised in the Commonwealth, and I grew up hiking and camping right here in Rockbridge County. I love Rockbridge County and I love Virginia. And, you know, I just want to take some time to acknowledge some of the scary claims that have been brought up tonight and that have been previously brought up at the Planning Commission. You know, I understand that folks are concerned. That being said, I wouldn't be in this industry and I wouldn't be standing here representing this project before y'all if those claims were true. The truth is that Mr. Huffman saw a small-scale solar facility as the right way for his family to earn revenue from their land and keep the farm and the family. And I'd like to leave with you guys four points about what Warm Run Solar will do. First, Warm Run Solar will benefit the community. The power produced in this facility will be consumed 100% locally, will not be sent to Northern Virginia to supply energy for the data centers or cities. The project will also provide over $500,000 in direct revenue for Rockbridge County without the corresponding draw on county services. The second thing, Warm Run will fit into the landscape. Located between three major highways adjacent to existing commercial uses and on a small portion of a 166-acre family farm, Warm Run is located in an area where the county encourages development. Third, Warm Run will steward the land respectfully. Unlike other permanent uses of this property, the project will be fully removed at the end of its life, and the land can be returned to agriculture. The project improves the site by moving from passive to active stormwater management through robust local and state regulations that protect the land and preserve local waterways. Fourth and finally, Warm Run will be a good neighbor. The project is well-hidden and well-screened from nearby interstates, Route 11, and the adjacent properties. Warm Run is a known and predictable quantity. This is a passive, quiet and unlit use with no dust, odor, or noise during operation. I look forward to sharing more information about Warm Run Solar and answering any questions about small scale at the next meeting. Thank you guys very much.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Amanda Baxter?
Amanda Baxter, Walker's Creek District. I think there is a place for solar energy, and I think on top of buildings and in industrial parks, it's a great thing, but not in our agricultural land of Rockbridge County. I can see the proposed site from my deck, and I don't want to look at it. I want to look at green fields and cows. The money that it's going to generate over the ten years, $500,000, so $5,000 a year, I don't think the county needs that so much. You'll be getting that a month with the two new hotels that we've just got in town. So plenty of money in the kitty for that right now. I think what Rob Huffman did was a really underhand trick to sell a property and then several days later, turn all the neighboring land into this industrial plant where the life and the quality of life of the neighbors on Warm Run is going to be ruined for a year or more with blasting and drilling and digging because that land is all rock. The building of the solar plant is inconsistent to the comprehensive plan that we have for the county, and you have the right to deny it with the adverse effects on the roads, the Warm Run Road, the hazardous traffic coming into the single lane, single dirt lane that all these trucks are going to be blocking all day long. The tax credits to these shell companies can be sold on. So the gentleman who just spoke can sell the company. It's going to be sold and sold and sold many, many times. So at the end of the day, he promises to clean it up, but it might not be him that owns the company anymore. So I think it's very important that you guys know who's responsible for the dismantling. And there's a lot of water there. There's Mill Creek and Warm Run, and all that drilling and dirt is going to end up in our water source. Mill Creek runs into the Maury River. The Maury River is Lexington City's water source. Who's going to monitor that? Those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary Rulie?
I'd like to say my name.
And your magisterial district.
Gary P. Rulie. I just come to say.
Buffalo District.
Did I say something wrong?
No, I've just added that you're in the Buffalo District.
That's true. I can't hear very good, but anyway, I just wanted to say that I'm against the solar fields in a farmland just because I'd like to look at a cow or corn more than I do a solar panel. And I think a solar panel's on your house or on a shed or wherever you want to put them, don't really hurt my feelings. I think they ugly. I don't like looking at them. There might be some benefits to them. I think I work WNL, I got them in the parking lot. That suits me all right. But I really don't like seeing them out there in Fairfield. I don't want to go to Walker's Run and see them. I want to let Dominion Power make electricity. I want Back Creek to supply us with electricity. Ain't nothing wrong with solar and electric, but I think they getting it, I think they getting jumping a gun on this stuff. And you guys who, I appreciate everything y'all do, I wouldn't want your job, but you got to balance what's going on over here. We don't want a bunch of our good farmland looking like a Chinese solar factory, and they buying our coal and we buying our plastic. And at the end of the day, those solar panels are going to create some kind of trash. They're not completely good. And if you put them out on a piece of farmland, it burns the land up. It can ruin that piece of land, even if you decide, hey, I'm going to put my cows back. I'm going to start grazing. I'm going to grow cropland. Food's way more important than energy, in my opinion, especially in a pandemic or something happens. You need food. You need food and water. It's more important than its solar panels. They're ugly. And I think a person has a right to put what he wants on his own property. If they offer me money to put on my property, they ain't putting it on my property. I don't want their money, and I don't need it. And some of you might. And I'm on the farmer's side. I'm on cropland side, and I'm on grazing side. And I think y'all need to reconsider some of this stuff before you go giving these permits out to just let people botch up acres, I mean, hundreds of acres. I think you got to have 25 acres before it's even profitable to do it, and that's a pile of solar panels. But that's all I wanted to say, and I appreciate y'all listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Rulie.
Y'all have a good night.
Luke Grant?
I'm Luke Grant, South River District. I'm just here to say I'm against the solar panels. I've done stood up here and complained to y'all before. Hate that we got to keep coming back to this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Did we lose our list?
That's Madam Chair, that's all who's signed up.
All righty, want to check online? Is there anybody else that has not signed up?
Ms. Hughes, Ms. Patterson?
Yes, ma'am.
No hands raised on line.
Good evening, ma'am.
Hi. I'm Nancy Cruz. I'm out of there. I live in the Natural Bridge. Maybe you can help me out here. I was at a meeting when a young man got up to speak about how good this project is. If that's what he believes, that's fine. But when I went and sat down, a few people around me said, he got paid. Did he? Okay. And the company that is putting the solar panels in are getting taxed, right? But you say they are, that they are getting paid. Exactly how much a year are they getting paid? You know?
Ma'am.
Oh, no, you're not answering questions. I'm sorry. Okay. They also say that at the end of the life of the solar panels, that they will get rid of them and do it properly. But now they don't own it. They sold it to another company so they can get credits, and that company sold it to another one so they can get credits. So now the life of the panels comes to an end. The company that started this, and now they will. I should have put my glasses on. I'm sorry.
Take your time. Well, take three minutes.
That started this and said that they would remove it, but they don't own it. So who is going to clean up? Not the first company, because they no longer own it. Yes, you guessed it, Rockbridge County. For the little amount of money we get each year, is it worth it? Whose side are you on? The county, we're not here to be obstinate. We are here because we love this county. We care about the way it is going. We all have a stake in it. The solar companies, their stake is money.
Thank you. Anybody else? Was there no one online?
There wasn't.
Yes, sir.
Why can't I hear? I'm just wondering if it'd be possible, instead of us splitting this, I go ahead and just cover it?
Well, you each can speak, certainly.
I'd just like to read it. I mean, if you don't mind.
You can have my three minutes, but it's a one.
Alan, what?
We both read it and.
Sure. Let's start.
We're a team.
Absolutely. Go ahead.
Here we are. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Alan Stout, South River. My understanding regarding this particular zoning special exemption application is that you will rule on the specific application without personal bias and feeling about solar or green energy, or whether it would be better than a housing development or some other use in the future. The county's use of the land use law handbook addressing as a guide when addressing zoning special exemption stipulates clearly the reasonable grounds to deny a special exemption. The conditions that clearly support the denial of a special exemption application are as follows. I'm going to mention a few. The proposed use is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. That's one of them. It is well-publicized fact, solar projects should never be placed near wetlands, rivers, streams, tributaries, and to avoid immediate damage to water quality and possibly ecological disasters. Uncontrollable runoff of water and topsoil is well-documented, a well-documented byproduct of industrial solar power plant site development. This increase in watershed sedimentation impacts all downstream river and estuaries. This contamination does not stop at the end of the construction. The removal of the topsoil and the attempt to shift and evacuate, excavate the predominant limestone rock construction area coupled with the significant percentage. the significant percentage of sloping runoff toward Mill Creek along with that with inadequate and unproven stormwater controls lead to long-term runoff in water contamination. As clearly stated in the comprehensive plan, groundwater is extremely important natural county resource. As estimated, 18,000 county residents representing 7,400 households obtain their water from wells and springs. The groundwater flow system underneath the valley floor of the limestone and dolomite rock is thought to be shallow and underwater table conditions. This floor makes up most of the site of this project. The conscious, the comprehensive plan addresses surface water. Surface water quality in Virginia is monitored by the DEQ in order to determine how well water meets the goals of the Federal Clean Water Act. So why a solar site next to Mill Creek? The comprehensive plan states the natural environment goal is to protect and preserve the scenic beauty and the environmental quality of the county. It goes on to say, in the past, the built environments disregard for the natural environment has produced a number of dramatic, tragic and uneconomical results such as polluted waters, smog, costly flooding, decreased wildlife and fish production and millions of tons of soil lost through erosion. Resulting in an adverse effect on the citizens living in the county, on our tourism and business in the area. The proposed use would have adverse impacts on the character of the neighborhood. The anticipated 10 to 17 months of construction chaos as an industrial solar power plant requires stripping the land, creating an ecological wasteland. Grading, pile driving, drilling, blasting, attempted water retention and electrical cable trenching and ward and road construction all destructively impact are impacting on the neighborhood and the families and undermines the quality of life we now enjoy. The proposed use would have adverse impacts on roads. This is one of the objections for denial. The proposed use would have adverse impacts on roads or create a hazardous traffic situation. The proposed entrance to get to the construction area runs adjacent to our property line for 450 feet off of Warm Run Road. The only entrance to seven homes in our neighborhood. This is a single lane gravel road which involves navigating a hazardous turnoff of Lincoln Road, a narrow, unmarked two lane road used by 370 to 500 vehicles daily, including school buses with children. This road is used as a cut through from US 11 on Buena Vista, old Buena Vista Road. The solar company estimates roughly 30 plus worker, work vehicles coming and going from seven in the morning to seven eight PM, 12 hours a day, six days a week, plus heavy delivery vehicles delivering materials and heavy excavation equipment to the existing traffic. This clearly adversely impacts the roads involved and creates a significant hazardous traffic situation for residents and emergency vehicles needing access. Another reason for denial. The, the proposed use would have an adverse impact on the abutting properties. Based on recent studies, the expected reduction in property values range from five to 25%, depending upon the proximity to the solar site. In closing, if you were, if you were willing to ignore the presence of all of the aforementioned grounds for denying the special exception application and the destructive effects on the 12 families that live adjacent to or neighboring the property of the application, because it truly benefits all the citizens of Rockbridge County, we could better deal with that. However, if you're willing to expose the 12 families to the aforementioned destructive impacts that are real and clearly stated as grounds for denying a special exemption application per the county land use law handbook for the benefit of one person, Mr. Huffman, who does not even live on or near the application property being proposed and a solar company that cares nothing about the citizens of Rockbridge.
Mr. Sad, are you about it?
I'm totally about it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Only for profit, uh, tax credits. Then we have a major legal and moral problem with that and so should you. Therefore, one sentence, one sentence. Therefore, I do not, I do not only hope the application to fail, but I anticipate a unanimous denial of the application. Thank for your willingness. And thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Stout. Is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I'm McMichael, South River.
Yes.
Um, I've heard a lot of things here this evening about policies, procedures, but I want to talk a little bit about the environment and what that's going to do to farming community around this water source. Um, I read the proposal by the company here and I saw a lot of documents and phrases about the protection of the, all different kinds of bats we have. We have the brown bat, the long haired bat. And I did not see anything regarding the type of shell that may be encountered when drilling. So this area is very susceptible to something called APM, which is an acid producing material. Not saying that it is there, but it could be there. Once you drill and drill into this material, there's no putting it back in the box. And once you drill into that and get it into our water source, there's no way to get rid of that. So I want y'all to take that into consideration. These people that are in this room today, they have livestock that drink out of that water. They have families that drink out of that water. And we would like to keep that water clean. So please think about that when you're going home tonight.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Uh, is there anybody? Yes, please.
Uh, good evening. My name is John Townsend. I'm with Sun Tribe and the applicant. It's okay. I just want to respond to a few of the comments that I've heard.
Certainly.
Um, uh, first of all, I want to thank everyone for being here and for the commentary and for the board allowing us all to speak. I, I want to mainly reiterate that we look forward to presenting the full details of the package and the application at the next meeting or when that's appropriate. The, the four things I wanted to touch on, the, the idea and concept of decommissioning has come a few times. I'd like to remind the, but there is state law and some conditions.
Mr. Townsend, will you pull that mic towards you? Yes, so everyone can hear you.
Sorry about that. I just want to touch on decommissioning briefly and remind the board and the gallery that there are state law and some other conditions that will bind the project to remove it. So if Sun Tribe owns it, we'll be required to remove the facility. If Sun Tribe doesn't own it, there'll still be a bond in place to remove the facility as well. Stormwater and erosion and sediment control, that question came up. Want to remind everyone as well, that between Rockbridge County and the Department of Environmental Quality, the quantity and quality of any water during construction and during operation and during decommission, we'll all have to go through a rigorous review process and meet a bunch of requirements before any, any ground can be disturbed. Lastly, I just wanted to sort of touch on some of the concerns that Mr. Stout is particularly about the traffic. I understand that's been a concern and I just want to remind everyone that we've also worked with a third party engineering firm on how we can best address traffic concerns for that short section of Warm Run Road. And again, we look forward to presenting those to you at the next meeting. So with that, I just want to say thank you again and I look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment? Susan. All righty. No comments from the board. I would entertain a motion to. Are we finished? I, I believe we are. Uh, are there any comments or committee updates? Any of those? Right, if not.
Madam Chair, my, ask for, for the people in attendance. When, I'm, I'm sliding can answer. When do you anticipate the planning commission taking us back up?
It will be placed, uh, it will be placed on the November 13th meeting. That meeting's held in this room and it starts at 7:00 PM. Second Wednesday of the month.
And then Mr. Dryden, I guess you would. We expect it to come back to the board supervisors in December.
Uh, it, it would have, we have to make a notice for the hearing. If we give proper notice for it, then it could be, either be the last meeting in November or the first meeting in December.
Do we have a second December meeting?
No, just, you don't.
All right.
Unless you call a special meeting.
Are there any other questions, comments? All right, gentlemen, it's your motion to adjourn.
Remove. Second.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis. And I vote yes. Thank you very much.
And I, I'd just like to say too, just announce that the, the next meeting will be Tuesday, November the 12th, because Monday is Veterans Day.